Call this meeting to order, the City Commission, Rio Grande City. It is September the 4th, make sure that's the case, 2019, 6:07 PM. This time we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Gattuso, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Ramirez.
Good Lord, thank you for giving us the opportunity to get together today to conduct city business. We thank you, Lord, for the good rains that we have received. We ask, Lord, that they continue. We also ask you, Lord, that you bless us today and help us to make the right decisions for Rio Grande. We ask, Lord, that you bless this great city, that you bless this county, and that you bless our neighbors. We ask that you bless our police officers and that you bless our soldiers in arms way. We ask that you bless this great country, in Jesus' name, my friend.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Honor the Texas flag, and pledge allegiance to the Texas Department of State.
Next, business in order is item 1B, local call and finding a quorum with España.
Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gasa.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner Jones, you want to go ahead and get started before we do a public forum?
Uh... We have a... We got a special guest today from Roma, Commissioner Joelinho Rosa. Those of you that follow me on Facebook, you know, me and Joelinho Rosa have a good friendship. Get along with us, our wives are real good, close friends. And last year, you know, we went into a little bet, you know, between Roma and Rio Grande. And of course, I came out on the short end of the stick. You know, either one point or 100 points, the loss is a loss. I had the pleasure of going before their commission, you know, and congratulating the mighty Gladiators last year. But this year, it took a turn. So, you know, we made another bet, and well, he's here today, you know, to be able to honor it. And if you can come forward, Commissioner, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner, thank you so much. A bet's a bet, I'm here to honor it. I'd like to congratulate the city of Rio Grande, the Rattlers, for a great game. And I wish them nothing but the best this coming season. Hopefully, everything goes good for Roma and for Rio. Thank you so much for letting me be here.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you. And with that, we need proof, of course, we're gonna take a picture in front. It looks great on you, sir.
That's exactly what I said, too.
Again, thank you to Commissioner Joelinho Rosa, certainly Commissioner Jones. And it's certainly a great game and inspirational. Obviously, good luck to the city of Roma, Gladiators, and of course, the city as well. As far as the city commission, and of course, we wish them well as far as the sister city. So, moving on, we have a public forum, item 1C. It's... España, do we have?
Yes, Mayor, you have Ms. Marlene Gutierrez, who is a resident at Oak Street behind Rio Motors.
How many people are here to speak?
Just me, I submitted for the quorum.
Okay, and the reason I'm saying that, that way we can hear all of you. If there's anyone else that would like to share any input as well, make sure we hear everyone and everybody's voice.
Could someone speak if they didn't submit the quorum?
Yes, I will go, we're gonna go ahead and allow that today, yes. We're gonna open it up to the public, whoever wants to speak today regarding, I'm assuming it's the...
The road behind the...
The road behind, okay. So, this time is two minutes.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. I'm here to express my concerns regarding that road. I don't know what the future plans are for that road, but I do know that 18-wheelers do pass by frequently. And we feel the vibration in our home. And lately, I've been home for the summer because I've been off of work. And I've noticed a lot of damage on our tile, which is coming from that vibration. And we've just started to notice that within the past year. We've noticed some damage in, on our ceilings, cracks. And I'm just here to ask that you all take our neighborhood, our homes into consideration with any future plans. I know that any future plans would probably have to go through you all, through votes, to get accepted or not. And I'm just asking that you take us into consideration because my parents worked very hard for our home. And it's expensive to have to fix any tile. If the foundation breaks, that means we have to refix the foundation, refix the tile. And if something passes and those 18-wheelers keep passing through, then we're wasting and wasting money throughout the years on, you know, fixing all of that. And I just, I'm here to express my concerns for that because it's not just my home that's been damaged, but my neighbors as well.
And to be clear, it's the alleyway that's right next to Walmart, right?
Yes.
The fence line, and there's an alleyway, and that's the road that you're referencing?
Yes.
And you've seen traffic go through there?
18-wheelers. Usually, border patrol, that's what we've always seen. But we see 18-wheelers, and we feel the vibration. You know when an 18-wheeler's passing because you feel the vibration of the home, it moves.
And this traffic, do you see it like on a weekly basis or every so often?
Weekly.
Weekly?
That's the alley, right?
Yes.
I'm talking about the alley, not the, not the, the 755.
Correct, correct.
Mr. Perez, is that the alley private property, is that the...
Belongs to...
Private property.
It's private property.
I know that my wife didn't talk, I just got, they just asked me to come here a little while. I spoke last year on the, on the situation, and we're supposed to get some, some, y'all are gonna do some data or something on it, some research on it or whatever. I don't know how far it's gone or where, at what point, or at what point it is right now. But the semis continue to drive by, our houses shake, the cabinets shake, we've got cracks. And we're neighbors, and I know our other neighbors also have the same problem. We haven't got any response on anything back. We don't know if y'all have had prior meetings concerning this. I know that we were told that we were gonna get some flyers explaining to us or telling us, you know what, we're gonna discuss this thing, we're gonna bring it back up. We haven't gotten anything, we haven't received anything, and I know they haven't received anything. Our point, our biggest concern is, I know the last time we were here, they told us that they wanted to build some kind of sound barrier. But what do we do in the meantime while our houses are cracking and it's costing us money to repair?
In my opinion, I don't think of wall or whatever barrier it is that they're gonna build is gonna work because the vibration's coming from the floor. Apart from that, I feel like it's gonna be a waste of money because it's gonna crack whatever barrier it is. It's gonna be closer to where our homes are. And if our homes are getting cracked, then that wall's gonna get cracked as well, in my opinion. I mean, our homes are already getting cracked, that wall's closer to the road. I don't think that's gonna work.
Where do we stand on this right now? Where, where, what's the, where, at what point are we at now with this, with this road that's being planned to? I don't know if it's, it's being planned, not being planned, where do we stand with that? We have no information on it.
Ms. Guillen in public, I mean, Ms. Guillen. She probably can give us the latest update on the process itself.
It's in design.
It's in design at this time?
What is the design? I mean, if you're designing something, there's gotta be plans, or there's gotta be things that are, that are...
Thank you.
Are being looked at or something like that, there has to be... You don't design stuff without any plans, so there has to be plans to it.
Right.
Is there any way we can get that information and see what is it exactly that they're looking for? What is the timeline for this, for that, for this design situation that y'all have?
I believe in the last time that you were here, we talked about the expansion or the continuation of the 755 realignment. And at that time, it's a TechDOT component, and they're the ones that are gonna be, they still haven't had any public hearings.
Okay.
But once the design is in place and they have an idea and all that, you will be invited for public comment.
What's the timeline for it?
I don't know if we have a...
Do we know where we're at with it?
The, our engineer is here to have questions about the design, but the design is not complete, still undergoing a process. And then, of course, as Mr. Perez said, once that plan is complete and there will be a TechDOT, there will be a series of public hearings to discuss that.
What is the, what is the purpose of going through there, to be behind the alley? I mean, that private, what is the purpose of going through there?
There's two separate things here. One is the alleyway, which is private. The other is actually extending 755 to the port of entry, which is the current road right now. The current road that's there that goes to Walmart, that road, well, the idea is to expand that road and take it back to the port. Not necessarily the alleyway, am I mistaken on that?
The road that goes to the port already.
Let me just interject a little bit. I think the question, there's gonna be an issue of legal issue, what's private property and what's a public?
Yeah, I understand that.
What can the city do for the neighborhood? And then, you might have some recoursees on, maybe through a civil action against that private owner. I'm not saying that that's the case.
Yeah, yeah, we understand what that...
So, the question becomes, the city needs to be clear, I'm sure that if it can help, they're working towards that. That's why I think Commissioner Ramirez is the one who said it's a private, it's a public, so that's gonna be a big, a big issue. I think that what I can do as council for the city is maybe advise you and tell you, look, the city can work on the actual road and can help the neighborhood with what's going on on the actual road. But when it comes to private property, the city is very limited as to what they can do.
What is, what is the city, what is the ordinance or what do we have in place? Because that, that private property is not also equipped to handle that commercial, commercial vehicles.
Our homes aren't built for that.
Well, no, but I mean, it's, it's, I don't, I understand it's private property. But that road is not designed to carry the amount of weight that's going through the way them similarly. There's no weight.
No, all I'm trying to say, when it's private property, the city is a lot more limited legally as to what they can do on a person's private property.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
And I'm sure we'll get instructions as to it.
And those are excellent questions, once we bring TechDOT to look at what is it that they're designing to handle the commercial traffic. But again, going on with the current existing road, not necessarily bringing that alleyway. So, in essence, it would be moving the traffic from the alleyway over to the design commercial grade system. It's really moving it from, you know, point A to actual point B, which is already the existing road. Which is, the whole idea behind that is, is okay, what is gonna be the design? How much, is it gonna be able to sustain the commercial traffic? Because you're right, one of the things that has to be taken into consideration is how much weight can it handle? Because that's going to the port. But at this point, once we have TechDOT, that's something that we can get input from the public. So, that way you can see, okay, this is what, what it is. But going back to that, our frame of mind is, okay, moving the traffic from the alleyway over to the actual sustained road, which is handling commercial grade traffic.
But if you have already a road that goes through there, why, why is TechDOT? How did it come up that TechDOT wants to design one that goes to the port if there's already one?
Well, there's not a...
You have PTS that goes to the port, what is the point?
The point is to...
How does that come about?
The point is to move traffic several ways. One, of course, the existing PTS, and of course, through there. And that's one of the existing port of entries monies that came our way, and that's one of the things that they're looking at. So, moving traffic as soon as possible away from the city. Because the fact is that, the reality is, we're getting more traffic. Now with this unified cargo processing, there are more, there's more commercial traffic coming in through our bridge. So, what is it that we can do to move that traffic away from the city as soon as possible so they can go about their way? And of course, one of them is to go through PTS but come back around and then turn. The other is the nearest point, straight line would be from the port over through there to 755 and go about the way.
Could there be any other possible routes that they could take to avoid taking that route?
Well, those are things that, again, we're not gonna be able to answer today. But going back to that road itself is, what is the most cost-effective way to move the traffic through there? And again, the cost-effective?
I understand that, but at the same time, we're looking at the most cost, the most effective way, right? But the most cost-effective way, but then our homes are getting damaged due to those decisions.
See, but going back to that is, you currently have an alleyway.
Yeah.
Which, it's a private road. Do you want the traffic there or do we move it? So, again, these are questions that we're gonna have to mull over, and what's the best of, of... But again, we're not gonna be able to answer this, but what we can provide is, is, once there's more design, I mean, getting the public, and I do believe in that, you will have some input in that as the stages go. But to be frank with you, we're not even close yet.
And are y'all willing to get another exit out of our neighborhood? Because we, because of that light now, we can't even, and of course, you live there, you know the problem.
That's right.
To get out of that neighborhood.
Well, the whole idea is, part of that process is to get another exit through there as part of this whole package. So, again, right now, but going back, yes, the answer is, we want to move on getting a second exit through there, yes. But we're still, it's early in the process. But Ms. Guillen, once we have more info as far as, okay, this is where we're going. We don't really wanna put anything out there yet until we're more concrete as to what's gonna happen there. And are there the monies available to make that happen?
So, at the end, this thing is still gonna go through regardless, it's pretty much...
Well, no, I mean, at this point, that, what I'm saying is, there's several options.
Regardless of what happens, the thing is still gonna go through regardless, is the plan?
No, because things can happen along the road, monies are not available.
Oh, yeah, but the money's all you do.
No, but like, what about our concerns? Like, that's what I'm, like, okay, the money comes through, the money doesn't. But like, my house, his house, my neighbor's house.
So, for example, like, his comment earlier was, you could have more input in the, on the design part to make sure that it can withstand the weights and that that does not translate to it shifting through the ground to your property. And those are the kind of things in the design side that possibly can be engineered to make sure it absorbs that vibration from those heavy vehicles instead of it the way it is now.
I know that one of the situations things is that, they comment on it, looks like that they might put some type of wall as a barrier, stuff like that, noise reduction. But then that blocks our view for everything.
Well, and again...
If it's a huge wall, I think, I don't know how high these walls are, are supposed to be, if that's... That was the, I know the last time that we came out here, that's what one of the commissioners had said. This is one of the things that TechDOT does, they do these walls. Well, how high is that wall? If this wall is eight feet high, this is, we're just staring at a wall in the backyard now.
All right.
I mean, you know, just...
Well, definitely, we'll invite you to that, we're gonna invite you for sure, Ms. Guillen. I'm sure you have, Guillen has, and Mr. Perez, as far as your contact information. Once we get to that stage as far as getting that input, that's gonna be crucial going back to the design. But to answer your question, no, it's not 100% yes. I mean, obviously, the commission has to decide what direction we're gonna go at that point. But definitely, your input is gonna be welcome, and it certainly is. Thank you for your input today.
Thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
Anyone else that would like to speak on that? All right, thank you very much. Next, business in order is item 1D, departmental reports. Mr. Perez? We have Mr. Frank.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Mr. Guillen, how are you today, sir?
Doing great, sir. We're gonna present two plaques to two of our track athletes. Coach Ramírez will speak.
Fantastic.
Speech.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Hello, city commissioners, Mayor. I'm Coach Ramirez, head summer track coach for the city. And I'm here to present to the awards to our kids. One of them is for the Female Athlete of the Year for the city and for the Male Athlete of the Year for the city as well. We'll go with the Male Athlete of the Year first. This award goes to Mr. Dante Barreira. You wanna stand up, Dante? Real quick, come over here, quick. Mr. Dante Barreira is an incoming eighth grader at Magnet Middle School who competes for Ringgold Middle after just picking up the sport a year ago. And, but he's been doing it nine years, but he started doing the shot, right, last year? Shot and disc last year, okay? Dante worked hard, and he got second place finishes and three third place finishes with a couple of eighth and ninth place finishes at the TAF State Meet. So, he was, all in all, he placed in the top 10 in both the shot and the disc at the state meet with only one year of experience under his belt. So, I think that deserves and warrants a round of applause for Mr. Dante Barreira. He's got a bunch of accolades here. Had personal bests of 37 feet, 10 inches in the shot put, 117 feet and 6 inches in the discus. And it's gonna line him up to be one of the dominant throwers in the, in the city and of course, the valley. And I think, I don't think anybody is really, I guess, I guess clueless to the fact that for years, Rio Grande City has produced a good amount of shot put throwers and discus throwers. Not too long ago, we had Mr. Steven Signs here, which was a state champion for our city. And we've got a good one here on our hands. So, we just wanna make sure that we recognize Mr. Dante and all his accomplishments. So, again, Dante Barreira was the Male Athlete of the Year for the city of Rio Grande City.
All right, good job.
Dante would like to say a few words to the city.
I wanna thank Coach Ramirez and Rio Grande City for supporting me, and I wanna thank him, yeah.
He's right there.
Take a picture?
Yes, sure.
Or you want me to say?
Yes, go ahead, and then we'll take a picture with him.
Okay. On the girl's side, I don't know if I can call her a girl anymore, she's becoming a fabulous young woman through our eyes. Serena Ramirez is our, is our Female Athlete of the Year. She's won it, she's won this award countless times. She won it last year. And just a little bit about Serena, she's an incoming freshman. Serena, where are you, come over here. Serena, so this is Serena Ramirez, okay? Incoming freshman at Rio Grande City High School, and we're so glad finally to have her at high school. So, you know, she's been through this seven years, chiquita, okay? And now she's a young woman at, at high school, and we see her every day. Dominant summer where she threw the shot and disc, where she collected six first place finishes, one gold medal, one silver medal, and she placed third at the state meet in both the shot and the disc. Serena has had huge personal bests of 40 feet, one and a half inches in the shot put, and 128 in the discus. The 40, I think, one and a half would be considered probably a school record, right? But she throws for the summer track program. So, we're still gonna have to do it when it's time for her to do it in track and field for our program. See, so they won't acknowledge that as a, a school record yet. But it's coming, trust me, it's coming. Which puts her near the top in the state in the high school varsity level. She's got countless awards, I'm not gonna announce them all, but just a little bit again about Serena. We've seen her grow through our eyes the last couple of years. And I'm on the guys' track side on the high school level, but we all work with each other, and we are so happy to have Serena now at the high school with us, okay? And again, just like Dante and the, and the guys and Steven Signs, I think this one is one that we should really recognize for the next couple of years. Ms. Serena Ramirez, would you like to say a couple of words?
Sorry. I just wanted to thank all my coaches that helped me get to where I am today and everybody who supported me through it, especially my parents who pushed me every day to get me to where I am today. My mom takes me everywhere, she complains about doing it, but at least she takes me still, and I'm here now.
Very well standing, congratulations.
We can have the athletes and families, please. Coaches?
Is that new coaches?
Yes.
It's gonna be kinda hard to top that. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I wanted to bring up an individual that I wanted to acknowledge. This individual has, when I first came into this department, we sat down together and we kinda... I was told if you and this guy can get on the same page, you guys will conquer the world. Throughout this whole time that I've been here, I've challenged him, I've asked him to do things, and he's risen up to the occasion to help this department. Recently, we just purchased a Vector truck. And that Vector truck, because of the technology it has and the size of it, it required a CDL driver. We don't have, currently have a CDL driver in our department. So, I wanna first acknowledge and thank our Public Works Director, Mr. Hector, for helping us within this timeframe that we didn't have a CDL driver. He offered his employees, and they lent their helping hand to help us in the time of need. But I sat with all our employees and I tried, I asked him, I said, look, we need a, we need a driver. And Mr. Eric Cantu, you wanna come up here? This, this man rose to the occasion and he said, you know what, I'll go get it. Aside, last month I brought him because he stepped up to the challenge of going to get his GED because he wanted to get certifications, he wanted to get some additional certifications as far as water treatment plants, wastewater treatment certifications. And then he, he didn't stop there. He said, you know what, you need a CDL driver, I'll go get the CDL license. And we've, with the help of Mr., and the blessing of Mr. Perez, we've worked at the schedule to allow him to study, to take the test, to go do what he needs to do. And last week, he got his CDL license. So, I think it's very, very important, and I wanted to acknowledge him, take a little time to acknowledge him because it just shows the effort that these men and women are putting into improving our city and improving our department. So, I really wanted to take the time to acknowledge him, so thank you very much, Mr. Perez.
Hey, we gotta take a picture, we gotta do the, hey, we're promoting, take a picture.
As I'm sure you guys, you know, he's a man of few words, but I, I, that's why even more so, we wanna acknowledge him. so we want to acknowledge him.
Again, just to stress that certainly encourage our employees to seek further educating themselves and seeking other certifications and licenses and continuing education, certainly promote that. And of course, making a better place for Rio Grande City as well. And all the employees are welcome to continue with that and we need to recognize it and hopefully as we move forward, we continue to recognize it in multiple ways. So thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor and Commissioners, that's it for departmental reports.
Are we sure, Mr. Perez? All right, next meeting is, or should I say, next item is Item 2A, just public hearing to solicit input from the public regarding the city of Rio Grande City proposed budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. This time I open the hearing, is that the correct terminology? It is 6:39 PM, open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to discuss our budget? The record, no one signed up. This time we end the public hearing, it is 6:39 PM. Next, business and orders, Item 3, Consent Agenda. Just Item A, Approval of Departmental Travel Request, Letter B, Approval of Minutes from Previous Meetings, and Letter C, Approval of Action Taken at the Meeting of the RGC EDC Held on August 19, 2019. Commissioners, you have that in your packet.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Consent Agenda by Commissioner Ramirez, we have second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, business and orders, Item 4, Ordinance, Letter A, First Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2019-2, City of Rio Grande City Municipal Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Mr. Perez?
Mayor and Commissioners, this has been presented before. Of course, it needs to go through a record vote.
Commissioners, if you have looked at the budget, are there any questions, any comments on this or anything else you would like to elaborate on this budget? Mr. Perez?
This is going to, going forward as discussed with you guys in the different workshops, that's how we're going to proceed.
And going back to the budget, if I remember correctly, we're looking at operating in the black?
Yes, sir.
Again, we don't have a, for the record, there's no deficit as this budget has been presented.
That is correct. Mr. Cantu, would you like to confirm that?
Yes. We are operating in the black. All funds are operating in the black. I believe only maybe the PUD might be a little bit on the red, but they have enough on the fund balance to cover most of it. And part of their red is because of the increased administrative fees to cover salaries for brush cleanups on the.
And at this time, since it's the first reading, just to be clear, of course, we still need a second, so we can make any changes between now and the second reading. So any changes along the way?
Correct.
There's still room to make that, so again, if we proceed with this, there's still an opportunity to make any changes for the next reading.
With that being said, Mayor, I was looking at the budget, I know there were a couple of items that were being presented or proposed as far as some salary adjustments. I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as presented, but not include those adjustments that are being recommended on those salaries.
Correct. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez?
It has to be specific. Okay. The motion has to be specific. The language is actually.
The language is there, okay. I see the language, but with the exception of what I just mentioned, that certain adjustments not be included in that.
Correct, just read it and then at the end just add, with the exception of.
So I make a motion, I move that the city commission adopt and approve the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019, and ending September 30th, 2020, as presented, for the exception of those salary adjustments that are being proposed by city manager.
Then, that good as far as the motion?
I second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, we have a second by Commissioner Jones, and this is a record vote.
Yes. Mayor Joel Villarreal?
Favor?
Mayor Protem Garza?
Four.
Commissioner Flores?
Four.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Four.
Mr. Jones?
Four.
You have a motion, Mayor.
Just to clarify, that's not going to affect the salary increase that we proposed, a thousand dollars for all employees, the West?
And the fire department?
Right, that is something else that will be proposed, that is not acceptable.
That's correct.
Any further clarification on that, Commissioner? Moving on to next item is Item 4B, First Reading and Approval of Ordinance Number 2019-3, Living and Ad Valorem Taxes for Maintenance and Operations and for Debt Service of the Municipal Government of the City of Rio Grande City, Taxes for Tax Year Ending December 30, 2019.
Mayor and Commissioners, as previously discussed, we're looking for, going forward with a tax rate of point five zero seven five seven nine.
That's also a record vote?
Yes, sir.
There's the specific motion on there, under 4B. This time, do we entertain a motion?
Well, Mayor, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption, the tax rate of zero point five zero seven five seven nine, which is effectively a four point two two percent increase in the tax rate.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. Ms. Mayor?
Mayor Villarreal?
Four.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Four.
Commissioner Flores?
Against.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Four.
Commissioner Jones?
Against.
You have a motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, business and orders, Item 4C, First Reading and Adoption of Ordinance 2019-4, Amending the Adopted Ordinance Number 2015-2, Approving a New Rate Schedule for Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Service. 4C.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is, as previously discussed, we're looking for an increase in the brush collection.
Any further? This time, do we entertain a motion? Any further discussion? How much are we looking, okay, here we go. Two twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
It's on section one.
How do we compare, Mr. Perez, to other cities our size as far as brush collection rates?
I'm sorry?
How do we compare to other cities our size?
We're pretty, we were actually under compared to everybody else. We compared similar cities. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're in between at this time. And we looked at cities like Alamo, cities with similar number of residents.
Will we be able to purchase an additional brush truck so we can expedite, pick up a little bit sooner? Sometimes it takes longer than a month to pick up, so I think that if we do, generate some additional revenues, that we can look at purchasing additional truck.
Yes, sir. The whole reasoning behind this is for that additional truck and which includes a driver and a helper.
So again, for the record, as far as the rationale behind this is to purchase another truck, so we'll be having two trucks going around town, of course, with two drivers?
Correct.
As well as?
And each driver has a helper.
And each driver has a helper and being able to expedite the services?
Correct.
So we can maintain or beautify our city?
Correct.
And this is something, again, going back to the rationale as to why we're doing this. So a new truck with new driver?
And helper. At this time, if the current truck breaks, we get behind, okay? As it is, we're barely maintaining, so any maintenance that's extended time away from collecting brush impacts the residents. So we didn't have to play catch-up. Either we have to increase the hours or come in on weekends. And so this will allow us a little more flexibility to maintain and keep up with what we already, what the demand is already.
And plus, if one of the trucks breaks down?
Correct.
There may be any downtime, we'll still be able to continue functioning as usual.
That is correct. And I think Hector's here, he can vouch for it. We've had a couple of services where we send it off and it takes a little longer than they told us, and so therefore, if it's three days, four days, we're more than likely very close to being behind a week in collections.
So, Mr. Perez, you said that we're not above or, we're in the middle, correct? With this part?
Correct.
Who's been, who's below us? What cities?
I would, Hector, do you recall the list?
I think it's Alamo, Alamo, it's almost the same as.
But who is below us?
Below us is, I think Roma.
Roma, yeah.
Yeah, in my understanding, you know, I think Roma is in the, in the process also of purchasing a second truck, you know, so they're, you know, they're going to be increasing, you know, their rates also, you know, in my understanding, you know, that they're kind of with the same ideas that we're going with, you know, so I think it's an excellent, you know, thing to do right now, you know? I think the two twenty-five is not much, you know, and it's going to, it's going to serve a good purpose, Mayor, because, you know, we do need a second truck, you know, because no damos abasto and we need to help.
We highly recommend another truck, as Mr. said, Mr. Perez said, the maintenance and all that, we get a little bit behind.
And is the city going to be collecting brush more often than once a month?
We'll stick to the schedule at this time. If the schedule allows, we'll definitely increase it. I mean, so we'll have to figure it out once it comes in and make sure that if we can take advantage of that opportunity, of course.
Because right, right now, we're looking at one truck that goes half part of town the first two weeks, the other half the other two weeks, right?
Correct.
But now having a second?
But if you get behind, you're not keeping up with the schedule.
And my understanding, because I see those little trailers that are going out and they also help out picking up the?
Right.
The brush and the bags and everything, so, you know, I think it's time for another truck, you know, because the city's not getting any smaller, it's growing and we need to keep up with the times.
Right. And is something you, is there something you recommend too, Mr. Barreira?
Yes, I highly recommend it.
Thank you.
I agree with the benefit of having a second truck, the only thing, the only issue that I have with this is that we do have a lot of complaints that, you know, there is brush that doesn't get picked up often enough, so if we can look into maybe doing it more than once a month.
Well, when we say complaints, is that complaints to you, Commissioner, or complaints to the department? So where are the complaints coming to?
Um, you know, in general, you'll see it on social media where people are complaining about, you know.
No, they're involved complaints.
So then, and how are we addressing those complaints, Mr. Perez? Whatever complaints come?
If they come to me, I send them directly to Hector. And often, what I've seen or heard from him is that if the truck can't get there, he'll send the truck, a regular pickup truck with a trailer, and that's a lot of times what you're seeing. They're trying to either catch up or help out.
Do we already, are we connected technology-wise already as far as the department to be able to send that through the mobile devices?
Their beams, yes.
So they can already send a complaint directly to your department?
Yes, yes.
Through the phone, mobile devices? And maybe that's something we need to promote more?
We need to advertise.
That's what we, I think I saw it on Facebook, right? Do we have it on our?
Yes.
On our page?
Are people taking advantage of it or not yet?
No, not yet.
So we don't have?
We need to advertise it some more.
Promote it more, market it more and get people used to the idea of, hey, you know, just, if there's a complaint on the system, then it'll go forward it directly to your department and you'll be able to address it, which?
And just to add to that, Mayor, I have had complaints to me personally where I have contacted Hector and he's gone to go pick up whatever brush or anything to pick up. But I've had complaints made to me as well.
Let's, let's market that, I mean, because if it's not utilized as often, then there's got to be a reason. What can we do to promote it more? Because then it'd be easier, more efficient than finally tracking one, it's kind of say they just go directly on their iPhone and submit it to you.
And I see it on a daily basis, I know that Commissioner Garza here with me can stand by and he can, you know, the truck goes by the neighborhood, yá palo todo día, yá te va. You know, the people need to realize when the truck is passing by the neighborhood and to bring out the truck, it's not afterwards.
And in somewhat of our defense, there's been some calls that I've received, not all of them, but in some cases, I've been able to go back to GPS and show, "He is passing through your neighborhood once a month." You know, there was a claim that he doesn't come by, it's been three months, and what am I paying for? And so I was able to actually show the gentleman, in fact, it was two weeks ago, the GPS route and saying, "Look, he's passing right in front of your house," you know? So there's, they're going through there. And you can tell when, if there's stuff, they are stopping, so it's not, they're not just driving by.
But this time, any further discussion or entertain a motion at this time?
I saw move to approve the increase. I need to read it out or?
No.
No.
It's 4C, right?
Yes. Yes.
I saw move to approve, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Ordinance 2019-4 by Commissioner Jones. Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion on this item? No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Barreira, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, business and orders, Item 5, Resolutions, Letter A, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number 2019-18 to Support and Participate in the South Texas Development Council for the Period of October 1st, 2019 to September 30, 2020.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is, we've been a member of the South Texas Development Council for years and this is a continuation and continuing to engage with them.
This time, do we entertain a motion?
I saw move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-18 by Commissioner Ramirez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed? Motion carries. Next, it's Item 5B, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution 2019-19, Authorizing the Fire Chief to Apply for and Execute the Requisite Terms and Conditions through the Texas Interstate Fire Mutual Aid System, Grant Assistance Program on behalf of the Rio Grande City Fire Department. Hello, Chief.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Yeah, this grant, basically, it helps us get a much-needed truck, brush truck in particular. For the details, I'll let my assistant chief talk to you, he's the one that's formalizing the.
Do you need Mayor, Commissioners? Hello, Chief.
What we have here is TIFMA's grant for a brand-new brush truck, but it comes with an agreement. Agreement states that you have to house it, maintenance, and provide insurance for it. And that would have to be approved by you. It also states that if it requires that you send the truck up north, we would have to man it and send it up there.
What is the value of the truck? What is the value of the truck?
It doesn't, it doesn't state. It just, it's up to two hundred thousand, but it could, it's to a Texas horse.
And it's a grant money, so again, the stipulation is if you don't pay any for it, however, if it's ever needed somewhere outside the area, then we would support the use of it, plus the man of the?
Correct.
And by manning in, manning the vehicle, how many? What is considered as far as manning the vehicle?
Three percent of.
Three?
Yeah.
And would that stipulate any period of time or just?
No.
How is it? Okay.
No, no.
And is this one vehicle, one truck, or is it, you're looking at a couple of trucks?
It's one vehicle. This is just for one grant and then there's another one. That's Item B, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And you all recommend to move on this?
Are there other cities that have applied for this grant that have gotten a vehicle?
I believe Mission did a couple of years ago. They have one and San Isidro, maybe like ten years ago, but they've never been called out.
So is that pretty much a guarantee we're going to get a vehicle if we apply for it or just a fifty-fifty chance?
Fifty-fifty chance, yeah.
Have we ever gotten one of those?
Not here in Rio Grande.
Twenty years back.
Twenty years ago, Chief. It's been a while.
Fifteen years back.
All right, so then we have a chance then. There's a chance, all right, okay. So there's a chance, so all right.
And what is the radius as to the area that you all need to respond to? Or what area is it outside the city?
They actually have a region. They actually have a region. It's a region.
And that region is where?
South Texas, um...
Corpus.
Dallas, Palabato.
Okay.
That's what I read on...
But it's an all in the state of Texas?
Yeah.
All right, at this time, do we entertain a motion?
I saw move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in order is item C. Discussion and possible action to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty, authorizing the fire chief to apply for and enter into a cooperative agreement between the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service and the City of Rio Grande City Fire Department for the Department of Defense firefighting property program equipment, a five-ton cargo truck.
Yes, sir, again, good evening. Uh, this is basically a, uh, one of those, uh, five tons, those army trucks we have. It's gonna be a flatbed truck. We don't plan to put any skid unit on it. Basically, the reason I wanna use that, utilize that is for floods.
Floods.
High, we need high-profile vehicles and basically that's the reason for it, uh, just to have that, uh, in service for us as a resource. And what details, basically, it was, uh, the only details that came, requirements is that we will need to color it, the different color. We need to color it at least red or change it from the traditional army fatigue color. Change it, uh, we need to, that's the only agreement that we have, we need to color it. And obviously, we'll have to get insurance for it, most of the times we do it.
Okay, at this time, do we entertain a motion?
I saw move, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, we have a chance, gentlemen, at least one of the two or maybe both, all right, so. But thank you, appreciate it. Next, business in order is item five D. Discussion and possible action to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-one, authorizing representation in an IRS matter and delegating authority to execute Form 2848 IRS Power of Attorney.
Mayor and Commissioners, is Ms. Brown here? I know a colleague, so you dealt with them?
Yes, sir.
Basically, they just didn't file some information and this is...
Correct, and TML, TML is saying, "Look, we're willing to represent the city regarding possible penalties." Uh, this has to do with employees, penalties with insurance coverage of some employees. The city has not received notice yet that the IRS is trying to collect from the city. But basically, you're given authorization that in case you do in the future, the legal team for TML will be representing the city.
They would be the ones representing.
Yes. But you have not received notice, uh, or anything of that nature. It's just, they represented pool of cities and they wanna just be prepared, if that's the case.
Ms. Brown, do you have anything to add?
Uh, this is something that when we had TML as our insurance, uh, TML would be the one to report the regulatory reporting for the end of the year for the IRS. We, as staff, had nothing to do with that. TML were the ones who were reporting. Somewhere along the way, I believe that they're reporting it, um, kind of late. And like the attorney said, we have not received any information on it. So, this is just a step, uh, if in case we need their representation, they will be able to, with this power of attorney, they will be able to represent the city.
And this was for what year?
Uh...
Was it twenty sixteen, seventeen?
Yes.
Okay. This is for what, not some taxes not collected or what?
No, penalties, possible penalties regarding, possible, yes.
In other words, they didn't file by April the fifteenth and then they ended up getting whatever penalties because then they filed, so they're in preparation if they get some, for, okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. And at this time, we have a recommendation then to, to move on this. Ms. Brown? Yes? All right.
No cost to the city on that?
No cost.
No, sir.
No cost? This time, do we entertain a motion?
I saw move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-one by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next is item nineteen, discussion and possible action to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-two, supporting AEP Texas Central Division, AEP LED Pilot Program to provide LED street lighting services to the City of Rio Grande City and supporting any amendments to AEP's tariff necessary to make service available. Nineteen.
Mayor and Commissioner, Ms. Beas has been working with Lee Jones. Ms. Beas, would you like to expand on this? This is lighting that's gonna be attached to the project, say ayes?
To Radler Drive.
Okay.
We've been dealing with Mr. Lee Jones, he's our representative of AEP for the area. In trying to maybe Radler Drive, Light It, uh, St. Back's project, I know some, uh, they presented for LED lighting. We expect a lot of people to be walking, uh, on sidewalks and hopefully shopping there. So, in knowing that this is a commercial development, they have a program, uh, that they will put up the poles and they will give lighting. But in the regular tariff schedule, they don't have LED rates. So, we have to participate in their LED lighting program. And this resolution just puts us, uh, into a formula so they can start the, the process of bringing that LED, uh, holes, lights, and the construction.
By the way, we're calling it Radler Drive. We're not set on the name, are we?
I need a name.
Sir, we'll need a name by the time that, uh, we go and file the plat at the courthouse.
Yes, that's what I'd like Mr. Perez to mention. We presented to PNC, uh, the developer has some of his plans for Radler Drive. We plan to report after the agreement where it's presented to council, uh, for approval, preliminary final. At that time, it would be the date to change...
And, and the reason, going back to it, this is a regional project and we're really promoting it as a regional project. Uh, so that's something we need to decide if Radler Drive would be an appropriate name for a regional project, trying to attract businesses from Miguel Aleman to Camargo to Zapata to, uh, our neighbors, La Grulla, Escobares, Roma. And is, does that name represent the region? So, that's something we need to decide as a commission, because to be frank with you, I would, um, for us to really consider, consider a regional perspective as opposed to just a, yes. But again, that's something that the commission would, that's something we need to decide, considering the scope of this project. This is not a just Rio Grande City project, this is a...
It had an original name of Rio Grande Village Drive, because it is a corporation, limited corporation, corporation actually developed.
Okay.
I know that was off, because the owner wanted to have your village.
Village, right. Well, can we start that process, Mr. Perez? See what names we can come up with or what?
Do you like to, I opened it up to the...
And then the commission can vote on it and decide what...
I opened it up to the department heads. I only had one submit names, uh, which I gave you a copy, but now forward to the rest. But, uh, do you wanna open it up to the public or, I mean, for ideas? Have a contest or?
All right, well...
Careful what you ask for.
What do you all, because again, so, just looking at it from that perspective, from a business perspective, I mean, go ahead.
If you want, Mayor, if I could just finish yet, we actually have a little bit more time, because once we get the call approved, we're gonna go back to amended plat to show that it's adequate for them, but we could change the name at that time.
In the amended...
Yeah, on the amended plat.
So, there's still some time. It's not like we have to rush this.
Anyway, the initial recording will be with Radler Drive.
We, we changed it at that one, we amended that. So, we actually have about six months.
So, no pressure, but...
And again, nothing against the Radler Drive, it's just looking at it from a regional perspective and what we're trying to promote here as far as business in, in our area. So, I'll leave it to, I guess we'll leave it up to you all to start coming up with some... Well, it's still Radler Drive. That's what was brought up, so, moving on, so...
LED lighting.
All right, so LED lighting, is there any expense to us?
Uh, no, sir.
No?
Other than when the lights are already up, with the, with the street lighting.
The electrical.
With the LED rate.
And if, once we do this though, are we confined to AEP at that point or to whatever bills they have? Let's say they start off at a certain rate and then later they...
Well, the AEP is just a construction.
Okay.
It's whatever direct energy will go to.
All right, so then that's separate and aside from, okay, all right.
But at this time, they don't have LED rates? So, this is why they call it a pilot. And so, this is to figure out what they should be charging for those customers.
It's going to expire soon because they're going to start naming it as part of the regular rate structure, because everything's turning into LED. So, I think in the resolution, I think it has a date that it expires to participate in the pilot.
How many lights are proposed to install in that area, in that drive?
It's a thousand feet, like, how many lights?
How many poles, how many lights are being proposed?
There were a hundred and fifteen, fifteen lights. And you want most of it to stream.
They're designing it, we forward to them the, uh, the plans of the road of this drive and they're designing it for the LED lights. And I know that they're doing it tomorrow at one and a two.
All right, do we entertain a motion at this time?
I saw move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in order, thank you, Ms. Beas, is item six, contracts and agreements, letter A. Discussion and possible action to approve the renewal of a lease agreement with RG CDC for premises at four oh six East Main Street, Lopez, Tijerina Complex.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is, uh, an agreement we have with the CDC, Ms. Giannina. Think they've been good tenants, we're gonna allow them to continue.
They've been good? All right, so, do we need to...
Respectfully, after we renew all the personal changes, can you, uh, start?
Thank you. This time, do we entertain a motion?
I saw move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Giannina. Next is item B, discussion and possible action to approve a memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for the use of fire station number two. Captain?
Yes, again, good evening. Uh, this is just a, a MOU, memorandum of understanding against, with, uh, between the city and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. This is basically for them to utilize the station, uh, to respond to any brush fires or anything that we have. Currently, they're under contract, uh, we've been having since two thousand and eleven, we've had four-year contracts as far as periods, uh, ending, uh, September ninth, this is when the, the fourth year ends on the second term. And the only difference, nothing changes, the only difference is they only had one extra year to five years to the original contract. Other than that, everything is, stays the same since two thousand and eleven. Right now, they're not mandating it, it's been a while, it's been a couple of years already since they, they lost manpower. But they say in a couple of months, they're, they're gonna be hiring again and they're saying to, they're gonna stop bringing more people to our region again.
Does there equipment in there that belongs to them?
They have, there's, as far as vehicles, no, uh, they do have equipment that they, they, they provide for themselves there, uh, washer and dryer and all that stuff. Their own use, uh, but no trucks at this time, uh, they don't have any trucks right now. But they, they house, they usually house, uh, two trucks there when they service, when they do have it out.
And you don't see any need for any changes on this memorandum of understanding?
Going over it, I mean, I don't see any, anything, uh...
Anything that stands out that we need to update?
No, no, everything stays the same.
Any future plans for the city as far as the airport is concerned?
There, there is a, no, I said buyout, but there is a, uh, part in the contract says that we can go ahead and dissolve the contract anytime. Either side can do that at any time. So, we're gonna, you wanna revisit that station over there or another use for it, you can.
So, it's not a binding, so it's not a binding understanding?
Understanding, yes.
Okay. All right.
Everything good with legal, oh, yeah, come?
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay, do we entertain a motion? Anyone? We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next, business in order is item C, discussion and possible action to approve authorization to negotiate an award contract for professional audit services with Araul Hernandez and Company. Mr. Perez?
Mayor and Commissioners, I got Mr. Cantu talk about our CPA that we used. Obviously, he, uh, completed the last two audits not too long ago, um, and so, Mr. Cantu is here to talk about...
Uh, yes, like Mr. Perez said, uh, Mr. Hernandez has helped us bring us current with the audits. He's worked on, on our last two audits, so he's very familiar with our books already. Uh, it would be my recommendation to bring him back and hire his professional services for the audit of eighteen ninety fiscal year, which hopefully we can get done by January, February.
We're shooting for early.
They've done a good job, so I move that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, Mr. Cantu, and all the staff that had, uh, contributed tremendously, immensely, I should say, regarding the, the audit and of course, I'm glad that we're already past that hurdle and now, well, now moving for the next, for next years and just addressing...
You wanna finally get in vacation?
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
And of course, what it means to the city to, to have this done and out of our way as far as going out for, for grants and that sort of thing. So, thank you to all the staff that made that possible. Obviously, it takes tremendous effort from many individuals, so you can't say enough about it. Thank you all for making that happen.
And Mr. Hernandez and company, they, they really came through for, for the sale.
Moving on to, so again, thank you. Moving on to item seven, planning, letter A, discussion and possible action on final approval of the Las Norias five at, uh, Rancho Santo Domingo in Rio Grande City, Stark County, Texas, seven eight.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Mr. Milan, good af, good afternoon, sir, or evening, I should say.
Yes, sir. Uh, Sharon Development, represented by AC Engineering, is requesting final approval of Las Norias Phase Five of Rancho Santo Domingo South Division. This seven point three, uh, seven, five acres. This is on the east side of town, this phase five. Uh, sanitary sewer services and water services are by La Union Water Supply. It has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission under meeting on August twenty-seven. This is, uh, average home, this is between two thousand to twenty-five hundred square feet homes, sorry, these size homes in that area.
So, even though it's not in our, um...
No, sir, it's within our, uh, well...
ETJ, it's in ETJ, five mile?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
One mile or five miles.
Okay. So, any issues with it, bless you, any issues with it, nothing that...
No, sir.
Okay.
Again, it's, it's being provided with sanitary sewer and, uh, eight-inch water line.
And planning and zoning already proved it or no?
On, on August twenty-seven, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. This time, do we entertain a motion or any further discussions?
I saw move, I saw move, okay?
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Milan. Next, business in order is item eight, executive session, chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney, and section five five one dot zero eight seven, economic development matters. It is seven seventeen PM. We're back from executive session, which is item nine, reconvene into regular session and consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following. Letter A, there's no action on that item. letter B, which is discussion and possible action regarding an economic development agreement related to the St. Ives Development Project under chapter three eighty of the Texas Local Government Code.
The mayor make the motion that we amend the street plans as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Commissioner Garza.
Also in the motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Ramirez, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries. Next is item C, discussion and possible action regarding legal issues concerning certain cities' fees and assessments, and there's no action on that item. This time have a motion
Second.
to adjourn by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned, it is eight forty-six P M.